I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:06 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We do not have any media students here tonight working our broadcast, so I'll move right on now to the petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular board meetings and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates according to this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. We only have one speaker tonight, so I will just call her and we'll have you pay attention to the clock for the two minutes. Allison Wang.
Good evening, everyone. So, I've noticed that some administrators' salaries have been increasing greatly over the past years. For example, one administrator's salary increased sixty-three point two-one percent over the last four years. Now, I'm not saying that this kind of salary increase is necessarily a very bad thing. Maybe this administrator happened to be excellent at his or her job and deserved this kind of benefit and promotion. However, when some people just look at these numbers and see this huge number such as sixty-three point two-one percent, alarm bells just start to go off in their heads. And some people, they start to question why do these kind of salaries not happen for such other people? And this causes some to begin to doubt the system and people start to lose trust within the district. And when people lose trust, this causes the entire system to become inefficient. Now, in order to restore the public's trust, would it be possible for the Board to explain the exact reasoning behind such large pay increases? And if it is because other districts are doing the same exact thing, then could you please provide any concrete examples and hard numbers about this? And just to throw another question out there, what about the numbers of how this district's compensations of teachers and counselors and other staff compare to that of other districts? And again, please, the hard numbers. Transparency is the only way to restore trust. Thank you.
Awesome. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on then to our consent portion of our agenda. Is there, we have, is there a motion, a second, to approve the consent items?
So moved.
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any agenda items, consent items, that Board members wish to have polled? Mr. Rollins?
Six E. And which items are we voting on, under the consent items?
Oh, I don't have that on there. Yeah. Starts at six A and goes through... Okay, consent, I'm sorry. I should have read them. It would be six A, the consent items for meeting minutes of June twenty-third, purchase orders, payroll, accounts payable, contracts under ten thousand, and travel, the bid recommendations for waste disposal and oil for school buses, STAR Autism Support Program, and the Freedom of Information Law. So, that's what we have, a motion and a second. And now I'll ask for items you want pulled.
Seven B.
Seven B. Did you also have another one? No. Okay. Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Seven A.
Seven A.
And then eight.
Eight. Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the items not polled.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and I'll take a motion, a second, to approve the first item polled, that was item seven A, the waste disposal and recycling service?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on approval of consent item seven A.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, and I'll take a motion, a second, for the second item that was polled, which is seven B, the oil for school buses?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or, Mr. Rollins?
The question I had on this, so there were six bidders for this, and I've already had these conversations with Mr. Schmidt, but I just want to hear the explanation. There were six bidders, three of them were rejected as being non-responsive for not submitting the required documentation. They happened to be the three lowest bidders. So, I'd just like to have an explanation. I guess my concern, my lingering concern is that if it's, they just didn't submit the right documentation, but they could, if they given another chance, whether we wouldn't be better off just rejecting all bids and going back out for bids? Or is this a situation where we don't think they could, they could meet the specifications?
Mr. Wilson?
The bid specifications were put on the street so we could get a better oil. What we've had is in two thousand and six, CJ four was the standard for the industry. Since then, they've come out with new engine specifications in two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten, and we have been experiencing problems with the original bid spec. CJ eleven is the newest standard that is coming out and is not complete. CJ eleven talks about the emissions, the particulate filters, which we're having clogged. And what we tried to do is put a bid on the street that met a better standard of oil that will be this, the eleventh standard. Now, the other manufacturers, one of them bid four different brands. Two of his were within the specification guidelines that we put out there. The other two did not meet, and he could not show or prove that they have done testing to meet the new standards that are coming out. So, in his case specifically, I know he could have, he couldn't meet with the lower standards in the process. Again, we're trying to do it because we're having problems with our fleet, and we're trying to correct those problems. So, we put it out, the majority of them met it. In fact, we put out oral alternative edition one, and the one that got it was actually an alternative. We put examples of the four different brands of oil that were meeting the standards, and another one came out that met that specification and actually would win the bid.
Okay, I'm not sure the question was entirely answered. So, one of them you don't think could have met the specifications, but what about the other two?
Again, we don't get to speak to the bidders. That's something that's done through the purchasing department, so we can't comment back and forth on that.
In terms of the required documentation within all of our bids, we have a required forms checklist that literally lists out absolutely every single form document that they are required to submit. In this case, on this checklist, we did put, provide proof of testing of drain capabilities, which includes documentation of fleet testing, provide proof of testing of exceeding CJ four specifications, and provide test results of enhanced performance comparable to basic OEM requirements. So, even though we may have had this information within the narrative of our bid scope, we did also have a separate page that does list and literally has checkboxes for that. And this is something that we do standard within all of our bids because we found that sometimes some of the forms and things would get buried in the documentation. People, potential bidders, wouldn't actually see it. In terms of if we think that it would be best to throw it out, I guess with saying the fact that it was extremely clear within our, within, throughout our documents, whether it was on the forms or the specification, or a separate form of the required items that they had to submit when they submitted their bid, it was very clear. So, I cannot speak to why these particular bidders chose not to submit that information, but in my opinion, it was extremely clear throughout the bid.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
Question for Mr. Wilson, if you don't mind. Think it'll be a quick question. If I understand, and maybe it's an issue of wording, it sounds to me more like these individual bidders really didn't meet some standards that you were looking for. So, rather than just documentation as sort of a bureaucratic step, it was really the proof that the products they were submitting to you for consideration met the standards. Would that be a fair statement?
That is correct. We wanted them to meet the standards and show that they've done testing to meet the standards.
Yeah. So, it's really not just, maybe this is a hint for the future, is rather than just saying documentation as much as that's technically correct, it might be useful to know they didn't meet standards by proving it through the documentation. That would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. And I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item seven B, the oil for school buses.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the STAR Autism Support Program.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Now, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item eight A.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Abstain.
The motion passes with six yeses and one abstain.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Ryan McReynolds as a ten-month elementary assistant principal, the appointment of Aaron Solberg as ten-month high school assistant principal, the appointment of Willie Boyd as ten-month high school assistant principal, residency hearing, hearing conclusion regarding a student access residency dispute, notice to remedy for Elisa Zupansek, notice to remedy for Myron Procol, HR organization report and PD report. And the consent, closed session consent items, including the following, student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The expulsion for KVB two is held in abeyance, contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the first semester of the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year, being executed on or before the next board meeting. And the following students have been granted a conditional probationary agreement, student DDW one. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any board, items that Board members like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
Ten, A, B, C, E.
A, B, C, and E? Okay. Mr. Rollins?
Ten G.
Okay. Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call a roll, take the roll on, call on the items not polled.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
What were you asking?
This is on the items not polled.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll take a motion now on the first item that was polled, which is, in a second for...
Point of order.
What's that?
I was going by the one in my packet, so I pulled one of the wrong things.
Okay.
I didn't realize that... Yeah, so my E is the workforce and PD report.
Okay.
And it looks like that E is...
Which is G.
Correct.
So, it's A, B, C, and G?
That's, and G.
Right.
Right, but I pulled it thinking it was E, so I voted. I'm not sure what I did, quite honestly.
So, what do we need to do? Okay. All right, so the first one that was polled was ten A, so I'll take a motion and a second for the appointment of Ryan McReynolds.
So moved.
Second.
Second. No discussions. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on item ten A.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Okay, the second item polled was item ten B, which is the appointment of Aaron Solberg. I'll take a motion and a second for that.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item ten B.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the third item that was polled, which is ten C, the appointment of Willie Boyd.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
The motion passes with five yeses and two nos.
Okay, the next item that was polled is item ten G, which is the HR orgis... Oh, we have to vote on it. Okay. Take a motion and a second then for the approval of item ten E, which is the notice, first notice to remedy?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second by Ms. McCullough. Coordinator call the roll on the approval of ten E.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of ten G, which is the HR org chart and professional development. Moved by Mrs. McCullough.
Second.
Second by Mr. Connor. I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of item ten G.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
The motion passes with four yeses, two nos, and one abstain.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Jarrett.
Had a really exciting opportunity to see some of the best of our students this week as we interviewed students for this Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and got a really promising group of candidates coming up, and I'm excited to see the great things that they'll do in our community. It's one of the true privileges that comes along with my job to work with a new group of students each year, and I think we picked, are in the process of selecting a really outstanding group. Thank you.
Mrs. McCullough, we'll start with your committee report, the Education Committee report.
Education Committee has not met since our previous board meeting. We will not be having a meeting in July as we are working to realign our agenda and report schedule to that of the new strategic plan. Our next meeting is scheduled for five-thirty in this room on August twentieth.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report?
The Operations Committee met here in this room on July seventh at five-thirty PM. We considered a request from Celuwa's Products for a tax abatement. At the end of the meeting, the company agreed to amend its, its request, and that is actually on the agenda under new business, so we'll be talking about it later on. I'll just defer to that, other than to say that as amended, the Operations Committee unanimously recommended its approval to the Board. We looked at a proposed water connection agreement with Marsh School. Marsh School, because of the addition that's being put on, the water connection is not large enough. We need a larger or a second connection from the city of Rockford. The city has offered a form intergovernmental agreement. The committee expressed some concerns about some of the items in that intergovernmental agreement, and I believe the administration is going back and talking to the city about those, those items. We talked about a, a proposed contract with Bradley, and Bradley to, I think, I think that has, where's Mr. Schmidt? Where is he anyway?
He's hiding back there.
What are you doing back there? This was, was this fire alarms, designing fire alarms, or, yes, designing fire alarms? We did have the conversation. It's a relatively small contract. I asked the question whether or not that's not something our in-house architect could do, and the, and Mr. Schmidt had indicated it is not. That's sort of a specialized expertise, and the consensus from people on the committee who knew those things agreed. So, the committee also unanimously recommended approval of that contract to the Board. We next looked at the proposed amendment to the BMO Harris lease. BMO Harris currently leases both the first and second floors of this building. They have expressed an interest in continuing the lease on the first floor, but not the second floor. There is a proposed amendment to the lease that was reviewed to do that. Again, the committee unanimously recommended that to the Board. We did look at some general plans that Mr. Schmidt had for sort of sealing off the second floor so that we could begin taking that over and using it. And then, under new business, we talked about getting a report from the administration on the rental income that we've been seeing from the use of our facilities, and Mr. Schmidt said he would bring that to the committee at a future date. Next, next meeting of the committee will be first Tuesday of next month, here in this, here in this room at five-thirty PM.
Which I believe is August fourth. Okay, Dr. Harner, the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee.
Has not met since the last board meeting, and we will meet a week from today, July, Tuesday, July twenty-first at seven PM on the fourth, fourth floor Superintendent's Conference Room.
Okay. Thank you. We are now on to action items for tonight's meeting. Our first action item is the graduation ceremonies arrangement and contract with the BMO Harris Bank Center and Coronado Performing Arts Center that Mr. Dotson presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any questions or discussion? I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the graduation ceremonies.
Mrs. McCullough? Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one abstain.
The second item for us on action tonight is property casualty and student accident program liability insurance. That was presented by Mary Ann Bessonen. Is there a motion and a second to approve this insurance renewal?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussions? Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor?
Yep, is... I don't know who's gonna answer the question, it's actually pretty, um, straightforward. When we enter with this cooperative, is there a group of carriers or a combination of reinsurance treaties that supports this? What's the, you need to come up and answer.
Yeah, that's a, there is a group of reinsurance companies, they go and they go out for bid, just like we would normally go out for bid and they go and get insurance.
So they're not carriers, this is all through reinsurance treaty?
Yeah.
Basically, and then it's just administered through click, right?
Right, click is, it's a self-insurance pool.
Right, right.
And then it's administered, yeah.
But it's done through reinsurance treaties is the point. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on, uh, the approval of the renewal for our property casualty student accident program liability insurance.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next action item, yeah, tonight is the Thomas W. Kroll Trust Grant Acceptance that Dr. Wolf presented. Is there a motion and a second to accept this?
So moved.
By Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
Just to thank you for the grant, uh, this is a excellent program, so it's very much appreciated.
I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the Kroll Trust Grant Acceptance.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Next, uh, action item is the approval of the elementary school attendance zone, Mr. Schmidt. I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
By Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Questions or discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
Part of the implementation and assessment plan for this elementary new zones is making just a slight modification to the current elementary student assignment policy of how we assign students based on the new zones that they're looking to approve tonight. Um, a little bit of just one of the current process that we have in place right now with the elementary zones, there were phased in over five years. Uh, the last, the fifth year of that phase in will be this coming school year, 15, 16. Um, when we phased this in there, we had students that were grandfathered in, basically we let students stay, once we changed the zone, we let them stay in their current building and they were grandfathered, even though their zone is a new school, they, where they were able to stay in the current school that they're in. We allowed reverse sibling on there based on those kids, if they went to their new zone and they had a student in a previous zone, that they could go back and forth on there, to help them out there with that reverse sibling, to keep the families together. And then transfers within the district are the same guidelines, that if they move outside of the attendance zone during the school year, they may move to the new attendance zone. Um, if they want to stay at their current zone, they have to provide their own transportation, but then at the end of that school year, they would move to their new attendance zone. Special programs, students, um, are not required to attend their attendance zone, it'll be based on the program that we have out there with, uh, the special programs. Homeless is assigned according to board policy 6.140. And then special education would attend their zone school as long as their required services are provided at that zone school. And if not, we will move them to a school where we have that, provide that special services. As we look in the process for the policy changes moving forward, um, we're not looking at a, um, we're looking at a transition over five years, uh, with the timeline coincides with the school closures, the repurposing of the buildings, the programming changes, the additions coming online, and potential, uh, closing of the schools and building of new schools. We're looking at no grandfathering, what we're looking at recommending is that when we change the attendance zone, that those students would go to the new attendance zone out there. Uh, part of this is, we looked at that, some of these schools are actually closing, so there's really no grandfathering on a closed school. We're looking at kindergarten students, uh, for some new guidelines based, uh, kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students, like we have kindergarten students coming in for the 15, 16 school year, um, there'll be a, a sign to Walker, but we already know based on some of the work that demographer has presented with the new attendance zones, that those students will be going into four different schools. So what we're recommending is, the year before that zone change, that incoming kindergarten students, we look at those students, identify those students, and see if we can place those students in their new school zone. So it helps alleviate the transition, it's better for the, the students coming in, instead of putting them into one year in kindergarten, closing that school, then moving them to another school. That's what we're looking at doing. And we would have some sibling transfers on there if there's seats available, if we do put that student in their new elementary zone and they have a sibling, let's say third grade out there at the building that's gonna be closed, um, instead of leaving them there for one year, we would allow them to do sibling transfers and bring that student over to their new zones. What I'm showing here is an example of, kind of what I'm talking about. Uh, we're using Walker, Walker is scheduled to close at the end of the 15, 16 school year, so as the beginning of the 16, 17 school year, those students would be zoned into currently how, what's presented to you, Ellis, Lewis, Lemon, Welsh, and Westview. What we have right here is Ellis, uh, we have three sections right now of kindergarten, basically three classrooms. We have a max capacity of 66 students. As of 7/7, enrollment does change on a daily basis, so that's why we dated this, as of that date. We have 33 students that are currently enrolled for those 66 spots. We have 15 that are identified on our system that are, in our system, they could be early childhood, they have not registered for next year. So there's 15 kids within that Ellis zone potentially out there. So there's 18 potential seats that are available right now, if you take those two and add them together. We know right now, this column right here is, these are the individual kids that are scheduled to go into kindergarten, currently in the Walker zone for this coming school year. We're looking at taking those 19 kids and moving them over to the Ellis. We can accommodate 18 of them, uh, with the other ones, we can either add another classroom or we can add a potential para out there to increase that number. Same thing if you look at Lewis Lemon. Um, we have a potential of six seats that are open, we have eight students that are identified right now that are going into kindergarten at Walker that we can move over to Lewis Lemon. Same thing at Welsh, we have seven open seats, seats right now. Uh, we have 12 students out there, that one we could potentially, uh, based on seat availability, open up another classroom or add some other additional paras in there. And then with Westview, currently we're right now at Westview, there's two teachers out here, uh, they have 21, potentially 21 open seats. There's 18 kids, so those kids will be able to slide right into those available seats out there at Westview. This is kind of just a working sample of what we want to look at doing every year before the transition there, to help ease the transition for those students into their new potential elementary school zones. Um, and it's missing on here, the special programs, homeless and special education would still stay the same as we currently do it right now. The only changes would be for the kindergarten and no grandfathering in there.
I was not at the last board meeting, so I don't know if you discussed this, but it was at the facilities commit, committee meeting, where, facilities oversight committee meeting, where this was first discussed, and one of the issues that came up is, what are we telling people about the zones for the potential new schools that haven't really been decided on until December? So, was there a consensus at the last board meeting? I mean, I just think we need to be clear about what we're saying, and, you know, it's probably more semantics than anything, but really we need to be clear that those particular zones associated with the new schools are contingent on a final decision being made by the board to build those schools. Or, I think the alternative was to say, we're only approving the zones for, I don't know which phases they are, phase one, phase two, whatever, and we're, and we're pushing off a decision on the other zones until the decision is made on the school. I think it's the same thing, I think we're just saying it a different way, but I don't know if there's a better way to, to present it one way or the other.
Ms. Holdley? I'm hoping I followed all of that. Um, there are two things that administration is recommending tonight, and that would be to approve the new zones and the second would be to approve, um, the change to the board policy because you do have your student assignment policy. So to the extent you want to limit it to phases in order for the facilities committee to complete its work and determine whether or not a recommendation will be coming forward on that, I think the best way to do it would be to limit those phases. But I do think the way that it was presented at the ops committee, um, was that it's fluid enough with the, with the proposals, but I can't speak to that because I wasn't at the ops committee.
I think if you can sit there, you can present the plan as is and you can say designated that the two zones that are in question really are new school one, new school two, that that zone is based on building new schools. Um, you can present that out there, that zone may still be the same zone that we might use if we do not build the schools, if it's based on the recommendation in December from the oversight committee to the board and the board doesn't, decides not to build the new schools, we would probably still use those zones. There might be some changes to the boundary lines of those zones. But even with this plan that we have, every year we may make changes to the elementary zones that's in the board policy based on demographics, capacities of building, things of that nature too.
Ms. McCulloch?
Well, it is my understanding that those zones might, would change just because you would not have the capacity, for example, at Nelson, if you did an addition as compared with a new school, it's not gonna have as many strands. So the students you might be moving over there from Kishawaki, might have to go to other schools in that area. So if we were to approve that phase of the plan about the new, um, buildings prior to this board making its final determination on the new buildings, then we, it would not be aligned. And so, um, I was at the facilities, or the operation committee meeting and, and it was, my understanding is that when we voted on this tonight, we would have this conversation and the board could make a decision as to whether or not to do it in phases or just with some sort of amendment that said, you know, dependent are determined on, on, on the, um, the approval of new schools. So I'll entertain some other conversation from fellow board members about that. Um, I have a couple other questions, but I think that we really need to have some, we need to know, to know what we want to do with that. So if anybody else would like to chime in on that, and then I'll come back with my other questions. Is there any?
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I have separate questions, and one was, um, the slides that you showed us, they talk about process, the current process that we use, but what's really being spoken to is the board policy that we have. And so I found where there's a board policy that's attached. Are the changes outlined in this?
Yes.
Cause they're not highlighted, I can't easily find them. And as a board, did we have discussion about possibly changing the policy or no, this was just a recommendation from, coming straight from the administration?
This is the recommendation for the changes in the elementary zones based on the new transition of the five years. Oh, did we not give the red line copy?
No, I don't, I can't see the changes. Okay.
But tho, but those were the items that you just presented, correct?
Well, it spoke to process, but it's different when we're talking about the policy and we're talking about change, making changes to the board policy, which the board would have to vote on. So that's one, the other is on the, um, oh, what is this? The cover sheet, um, under F, it talks about the zones being implemented in a staggered fashion. Full timelines will be available for families at registration for the 2015, 16 school year. At that time, parents will learn which zone they live in and what changes to expect in the coming years, including elementary school upgrades. So, um, do we have that available now? Where is that? Because I don't believe that I have a copy of this.
Of what the new plan is gonna be?
Yeah, the full timelines and all of that, do we have that? Is it somewhere in here?
The timeline is the transition over the phases, that's in your presentation as they look, um, for fiscal, or school year 15, 16, 16, 17, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20. That's in your presentation on slides, um, like 38 on up.
What will it look like for parents? Will it be a booklet?
No, what we're looking at doing is taking posters. Uh, thank you. Is this, if you look in your presentation, we will take posters like this, we will blow these up larger. This shows there, this is in your presentation, the 15, 16 school year, we'll have some documentation on the side, but it'll show the transition of what boundary changes are gonna be done for each individual year, when the schools will be closing, when the programs will be shifting, and it'll be for every single school year. So you'll have basically five posters out there that will show it, um, depending on how many years the building is affected from, um, rolling up or transitioning from, uh, elementary school to an early childhood center, to moving the bilingual program, to building the addition or closing.
So will these same posters then be displayed in every school or are they specific to this school?
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a poster that shows the affected boundary changes. We'll have a poster out there that shows all the boundaries for the district, and then we'll have one specific for that building of when they change throughout the course of the year. And then we'll have another poster out there to list all the recommended, um, all the improvements that have been completed in that building and what is gonna be completed in that building in an upcoming, um, fiscal years.
And then on page 49 in our, um, packet, it says that it's recommended that the district have an extensive enrollment analysis performed each year to ensure the best building and staffing decisions can be made, ensuring good stewardship of taxpayer support and student academic achievement. Who's responsible for doing it? What's the process for that?
That was a recommendation from the demographer, that's one of the steps that we'll be looking at on a yearly basis, that will be something outside the scope of what currently we have presented in front of you. Um, we're working on that right now to bring a contract forward to look at that, to do that enrollment analysis, have an outside independent person do that enrollment analysis every single year as we start looking at the transitions, um, in this five-year transitions for the new attendance boundaries.
So that was my next question, I wanted to know estimated cost for this.
I do not have an estimated cost for that yet. Uh, when we do have that, that will be brought to the operations committee and then to the board for approval.
Okay, and then on page seven, when it talks about capacity, space availability for the elementary schools, it says not including alternative capacity, what alternative capacity are we talking about?
When we look at the alternative capacity, when we look at the elementary zones, the zones are based on the general population of, um, the zones are based on K through five students that don't attend alternative programs like the bilingual program, Barbara dual language, the gifted program, the Montessori program, and the Haskel year-round program. Those are what we're classifying as alternative programs out there. So when we draw the attendance, when the demographer drew the attendance zone, it was looking at the students that weren't in those programs and just the students that are gonna attend the schools in their zone. zone.
So it doesn't take into account if those students leave the alternative program and end up having to their zone?
He tried to take, basically, his model that he looked at, because he looked at over the last few years of kids moving in and out from zone to zone, looking at the mobility rate in and out of alternative programs, basically what they were classified as one year and what program they're in the next year, and he took that into consideration when he drew these attendance zones.
For middle and high schools, the enrollment is that include the alternative?
The middle, part of this was just the elementary schools.
Right, but it says middle and high school current enrollment. Do you know if that, those numbers include the alter?
No, I do not. That will be a separate thing, that after we take care of the elementary zones, then we'll also look at working on the middle school and high school zones.
Ms. McCullough?
Seeing nothing from my fellow Board members. I'm going to come back and tell you, here's my concern. You're going to go out with your little posters to the school. You're going to put one up at Nelson saying, we're going to have a new school, and here's the new boundaries. You're going to put a new one up, or you're going to put them up at Cherry Valley White Swan. Here's the new school, here's the boundaries. This Board hasn't voted on that. We, we already have enough pressure from people who assume that there are new schools because that's what media and other people have said, and yet that has not been what we voted on. You go out and put those in the school, and there's really no objectivity left to what's being done in facilities oversight and coming in and telling us, because we will have, it will, it will become very, very personal. And then we are going to have to go back and say, oops, Board decided not, made a mistake. Here's what the real attendance zones are going to be. So I do believe that when I listened, I was here for the Operations Committee, and the recommendation was that we would approve the plan through, I believe it was, 2016-17, and that you would bring it back to us when we, when the facilities oversight gives their recommendation in December, the December 15th deadline. When I look at this, it says, or it says 2017-18, same elementary attendance areas as 16-17, with the exception of Nash Hole closing and Riverdale Houses kindergarten through fifth grade. So that doesn't really impact the new school, because the new school doesn't open until 18-19. The problem is, is obviously you need to have some decisions made for bids and all the other things that go out there. So I, I would like to, if I make a motion now, I can't ask my other questions. So I'm going to ask my other questions, and then I'll make my motion, if that's all right with you, Mr. President.
Sure.
I asked you this question earlier, and you, we did go find it, page 36. I wanted to talk about capacity, because we've heard from some members of the public saying the schools are doing great. I wish I, you know, I sent my kid to a private school, but I wouldn't now. I'd send him to the public school. I think Rockford Public School is the place to be. But I live in the Northeast, and you're not going to have enough room for my kid. We do have excess capacity built into this, even though we are closing some schools and changing some boundaries. We have about, what did you tell me?
About 1,400.
1,400 extra, additional seats still available, and this is for elementary, and that's out of 13,000, about 1,400 access, so about 10% excess capacity. In other words, additional seats available if we have an influx back, which I said I think would be a great problem to have.
It would be.
And we are also, as Ms. Jackson said, looking at having additional follow-ups so that we can, if, if the zones need to be tweaked based on changes in population and distribution and number of students, that those changes can be made. So we are looking at that. At that last Board meeting, I did ask you about the feeders, the fact that we, as a district, have said we would like our elementaries to feed into our middles, to feed into our high schools. And I was told that that is not part of this, that was not part of what was done, because that'll be like the next phase. So when, for, for everybody, anybody who's listening, when we started with zones, we started with high schools and middles, we started with secondary, and then we came back to elementary instead of starting with elementary, which really was much, a much more onerous task. And so we'll have to go back now, and I don't know what the timeline on that is, if, if we were to approve such a...
Once the Board approves these elementary zone schools, our first order of business is make sure we have the communication in, in place for the start of the school year. Then at the first Operations Committee meeting in either August or September, we'll bring a recommendation forward of starting the next phase of this with the middle school and high school zones.
And this will be done again objectively with an outside firm that looks at the numbers and
Yes.
demographics, and, I mean, this is not anything done in-house.
We are very happy with the process that led us to this vote here tonight, so we want to continue that same process.
So you, you brought forward the, the piece about grandfathering, and again, I think Board members need to have a conversation. We're not voting on a policy. We're voting conceptually on changes that would happen to the policy, not the verbiage, correct?
Mrs. Holy, we'll go through the changes for the
No, you would be voting on the policy, and I can let you know what those changes are.
So will that be separated out? Because I don't see it separate on, on the agenda. I don't see it separate that we're voting on the policy and that we're voting on the...
Well, Administration's recommendation incorporated all of that into
incorporates both. Okay. So here's my question on the grandfathering, and that is, I understand the idea of moving our kindergarten students, for example. We have our Walker kindergarten students who will be moving to Welsh. But by golly, I've got a third grader, and, and I don't want to be at two schools. So can my kid, my third grader go as well, or are we just going to be moving the kindergartners?
That's why we do have this item in here, right there. If a kindergarten student has an older sibling outside of the new tenants, they will, may request to move that student over there. We'll look at seat availability. Through all those individuals that we have out there, we're able to accommodate all the siblings except one.
I'm told, how many siblings?
There's almost 30, 27 to 30 of them. So that's what we'll be looking at that, too.
So that will be for Walker, and will that be the same for all the other schools moving forward?
Yes, that's why we want to look.
Because then the next year?
Yeah, this is kind of the process we wanted to use, and we just want to give you an example of how it would fall in effect for Walker. It's the same process we would look at every single year.
Okay. And I, I just want everybody to be real clear, that's as space is available, is what I understand you to say. Okay. Okay, before I make my motion, I see Mr. Rollins has his light on.
Mr. Connor had his light on.
Somebody else, so.
Mr. Connor?
Mr. Schmidt, right now, is it your plan to have a poster at every single school?
Yes.
And what would be the plan today? What would we show at the schools where potentially they might have new schools? What's it going to physically show?
If, right now, is if you sit there and you approve the plan, the five-year transition, it will show at this year, this, the school will close June of this year, and the students will be zoned to these schools moving forward in the next school year.
Okay, and that's on the assumption that the Board approves all the way through the 2019? In other words?
2020.
Yeah, 1920, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the assumption. Also, speaking of pressures, was there a referendum a year ago where the vote was 74 to 26% in favor of new schools, or was I in the Twilight Zone, or did that happen? I did, okay. Just checking to make sure that the public actually said that this was a good idea, so.
Mr. Rollins?
I have a point of order, I guess. So there seem to be two different things here, one of which is the policy. And was the policy, was there a first reading on the policy at the last Board meeting, or is this a first reading on the change in the policy?
The policy changes were discussed as, as a whole without adding the policy to the Board docs. The issue with the policy is if it isn't approved, because we have kindergartners now looking to be assigned, I guess they wouldn't know until August. I guess the, the first meeting in August, right before school starts, where they would be going. So I think that's why we brought the, it was supposed to be the redlined on here with it, because the requested changes were part of the last meeting. It just wasn't incorporated in policy format.
So what motion is currently on the floor before anybody starts making any motions?
It's the motion that the Board, let's see, Administration recommends that the Board of Education accept and approve the attached recommendations from RSP and Associates and the changes to Board policy 7.30. And I can go through what those changes are really quick. They're pretty, pretty easy to find on the very first page under attendance zones. The third paragraph was moved up from another section of the policy, and a sentence was added where it says at the end of the school year, the student will transfer, be transferred to the student's own school. That's if they're placed at a school outside of their zone. That's the current practice, but this helps clarify for anybody reading it what happens at the end of the year. And then a whole new section was added, the elementary attendance zone phase-in process was added, replacing the sibling preference section.
Ms. Jackson?
So I was at the last Board meeting, and I don't recall having a conversation regarding policy. I really don't. So I'm not sure where that conversation took place.
The word policy was never used. It's all incorporated in with the requested changes to the zones.
But you know what? I guess it shouldn't have been. It should have been two separate things, because one is the attendance zones. The other is, we're talking about making changes to policies. And so to bake it in there, I'm not okay with that. We should have had a discussion. We should have the redlined, so we can actually see, instead of listening to verbally, what the changes are going to be.
Okay, Ms. McCullough?
So I guess, and, and we can't divide these out. Um, well, I would like to make a motion that we, and I might need help with this, Ms. Holy. I'm not, I, I will say before I make that, that we really did not have a conversation about grandfathering, and we should have had that at the last meeting, because it's really coming to us for a second reading right now. So if anybody else would like to divide that out, I do know that it was, there was a conversation about it at Ops Committee. It's just that it didn't progress to the floor here. But I am, I, I do feel strongly that the process needs to play out. I understand the public has said what that they've said with their, with the referendum. I also understand that we are overseeing the expenditure of the money that they entrusted to this Board to follow through with all the construction and the changes in the district, and that was the reason that there is an Oversight Committee, and I will trust that process to be happening as well, that the Oversight Committee will bring their recommendation forward. And that's my concern, is that we follow the process. And so if we go forward and you vote on the entire plan right now, I think that's a card ahead of the horse, right? And so my motion would be that we approve the Administration's recommend, recommended plan, 06-15-15, updated final PDF that we received, through the 2017, through the 2017 phase, 2016-17 phase, with the caveat that the, the remainder of the plan be brought forward at such time as this Board votes on the new schools, because, depending on what happens with that. So that would be my, that would be my, yes?
Is there a second for that?
I, I'd really like to know, could I just ask a question before anybody seconds it? Mr. Rollins, what was the recommendation? What phase did you recommend through in Ops Committee? Do you remember? I was sat there, and I can't remember it. Do either of you?
Just to make a correction, this was never presented at Ops Committee. It was presented at the Facilities Oversight.
Oh, at Facilities. Dr. Harner, can you tell me, you're right, you're right, you're right. We were in this room, same place.
We were in this room.
Same faces around the table.
And the two alternatives that Mr. Rollins presented tonight were presented that evening.
But I don't remember the dates. Can you help me? What, what was the one, Mr. Rollins?
Through the 17.
Was it through 17-18, or was it through 16-17? Because I'll defer to your, to the conversation you had.
I don't precisely recall if it included through the 17 year or not. I think it was up until new schools would have to be determined.
That's right.
So which had included the 17. I think that was the proposal, or that was the thought that was voiced.
Right.
It wasn't a proposal or a vote.
Right. That was the recommendation.
So through 2016?
17.
Through 2017?
Yeah, 15-16, 16-17.
Okay.
Right.
So, and that is the, that is the amendment I have
Okay.
to offer.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Can you actually read that? Because I truly don't remember all the...
16-27.
So let me ask it this way. Did it include the policy side and the schedule?
No.
Okay, no policy side?
I made no, I made no amendment regarding the policy, merely the date through which the final plan is being approved.
Motion is to approve the Administration's recommendation through the 2016-17 plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion on the motion?
I'm sorry, I thought I heard with the stipulation that something be brought forward to us at a time. Can, may you please read it back?
Okay, the motion is to approve the recommended, the administrative, Administration-recommended plan of the ERP presentation through the 2016-2017 phase, and the remainder of the plan to come before Board at such times, and approve, I think, is what, would that be right? Before the Board at such times when the Board would vote for new facilities as determined.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
So I assume the timing of this is, as a reminder, December is the target date for the delivery of the recommendation of the Facilities Committee, right, of this year?
December of this year.
December of this year. So presumably, is it the intention of this to have, along with that, presuming the recommendation to wait to the Board votes, and then at the next meeting, we would present the other phases? Is that the intention? There's no timeframe, so that's what I'm asking.
That would be my intention, if, having put the motion on the floor. I mean, you wouldn't, right, either that or the Administration comes in with two sets, and there's no reason to have a second set if we approve the new buildings, right?
No problem, just clarifying.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Can I ask one clarification?
Sure.
Just making sure. So you're approving the phases 15-16 school year and 16-16-17 school year, and stop in there.
Correct.
The 17-18, 17-18 school year is really just the continuation of closing Nash Hole as an elementary school and open it as we do the phase transition and convert Riverdale over to K-5.
Ms. Holy, Ms. Holy?
That's why I, that's why I asked that question when I was making my motion. I read that off of their plan and said, these are the only things that are happening in that other year. And so are you sure that, but, yes, Mr. Rollins?
Well, I, with that clarification, this is going to be tortured, but I, I will move to amend your motion to amend. No? I don't think so. Move to amend to take it through 2017-2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I have a question. Is, is, is your proposal, either one of them, including or not including the Board policy changes?
Mine is.
Okay, all right, okay.
I had no intention of separating them.
All right, okay.
I leave that to my other Board members.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Mr. Connor?
Yeah, the issue, I believe, with 18-19, why it was not included in the original, is 18-19 does say Kishawaki and Nelson close. I think that's why we originally went with 16-17.
Oh, 17, 17-18.
17-18.
I'm sorry, 17-18, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're correct.
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that. Yep, that's what I meant. Yeah, okay, just to be clear.
Okay, so we need a, we, we have a motion and a second. We, we're now, we're now taking the roll on Mr. Rollins' amended motion.
Mr. Scirvano?
And yours included the 18?
18.
And we don't want to do that because the includes the number?
No, we do.
All right, yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
All right, now we got to go back to her original amendment. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for your original motion.
That has now been amended.
Has now amended. So we have to have a vote on that. Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes as amended with six yeses and one no.
Thank you.
Now we have to go back to the original. Now we go back.
Okay. Has amended twice, okay. Call the roll on that, then.
Well, discussion.
Discussion? Mr. Connor?
So just to be clear in my own poor brain, that in the documentation, I, it, that the changes to 7.30 or anything else are included in this overall motion? In other words, the policy changes that were brought
Correct.
are included. Okay.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I guess that's not my understanding. So Mrs. McCulloch moved to amend the motion, and she specifically said she was excluding the policy.
No, no, she was, she was not separating them.
I excluded any mention of the policy in my amendment, in my motion. So it stayed as part of the Administration's recommendation. So if anybody would like for us to vote on that separate from the zones, I said, my fellow Board members, someone else will need to make that motion. And it's still
If you want to separate.
Yeah, if you want to separate it. I don't know if it's too late. We haven't voted on it yet. We're in discussion, so I leave that to you. I was not going to.
Okay.
I guess my, my only comment is, I was going to vote for the policy either way. I just, I do think this is a poor way to bring it to us. I think it should have been brought as a separate matter. I think we should have been asked, I understand the time constraints. I think we should have been asked to suspend the rules, but I'm not going to be standing on process right now.
Mr. President, so what are the time constraints? Are we not going to have, I mean, is that going to be something that's on all our little posters? What's going to happen? And they won't get done on time because we can't vote on it until August, because that's our next meeting? Is that the issue? Just so we all understand what the time constraint is on that.
It's to notify the students and the parents of what potential zones that they would attend. I mean, basically with the new modification that we're looking for, the kids going into the Walker zone...
the Walker Zone, we would like to give them a timely fashion to let them know that they're going to Walker, or they're going to Ellis, Lewis, Lemon, Welsh, or Westview.
Because right now you have a kindergarten class at Walker for next year?
Three.
I mean, you actually have the teachers there and plan to put them there where this policy doesn't go in place. But if this goes in place, then they will go to Walker.
Yep, and there's things on the back end, we have to not only notify the students, but we have to make the adjustments of the staff and all the furniture and all the materials for it, too.
And I understand that, so it's, it's way beyond posters.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, so now we need to.
I do have a question. So when we talked about this, did we let, I guess, the community and parents know that we were considering not grandfathering? Was that part of the discussion throughout the entire facilities plan that we wouldn't grandfather? And I don't know who knows the answer to that.
Well, part of that, when you look at this plan, we're closing eight, nine schools, so.
Well, I know, but that's separate to grandfather, because we closed schools before and we grandfathered. So was that part of the discussion? Was that the understanding that we would be considering not grandfathering?
No, that's the recommendation that we're bringing forward.
Right, and it's, you know, I don't like the way this is done. It's, it's very unfair, because we didn't have that conversation. And to slip this in, it's, it's not transparent, let me use that word, and I don't support it.
Any other questions or comments?
There was some dialogue at the Facilities Oversight Committee with respect to grandfathering, yes, but I mean, not at the board level.
Community.
Absolutely.
We've had this facilities plan out there for years now, and I don't believe that's a conversation that we had with parents and things that we were going to not grandfather.
Okay, so the coordinator needs to call the roll now, right? On the, whatever.
Original.
On the original motion, as amended.
Mrs. Powers?
Sure, yeah.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no, as amended.
Okay, we will now move on to. Administration has requested the board to suspend the rules to consider the following item in order to ensure that continued claim payment is done and to avoid any lapse in coverage. This is on the workers' compensation administration, administration renewal. So I needed a motion to suspend the rules. Mr. Connor?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Harner? Seconds? Do we have discussion? No, okay. Okay, call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mrs. McCulloch? Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion, the motion passes with five yeses and two no's.
Okay. So now is there, I'm going to get a presentation. Do I need a motion and a second first? Okay, a motion and a second to approve the workers' compensation administrators renewal.
So moved.
Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Now, any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
So just so everybody knows, we are going to add something to policy so that we can discuss suspending the rules. And I think, I'll say out loud what I think the numbers are saying. We've had a pretty fair amount of suspension of the rules lately, and some of these I understand, some are a little harder to understand because they do take preparation ahead of time. So I think one of the things that we'd certainly request is that the reasons are clearer and more compelling on suspending the rules.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
So we're being asked to suspend on this document that was just passed around to us because we got a wrong copy, is that my understanding?
Right. Any other comments or question? No, I don't have the coordinator.
Well, why don't you speak to what was different? What was wrong that has been corrected on this copy, please?
The wrong document was loaded to Board Docs. It was an email speaking to the contract versus the actual contract.
So then we haven't had time to review this except for when it was passed around the table? Correct. Okay, just, just want to be clear.
Okay. Okay, coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the workers' compensation renewal.
So what happens if we don't approve this? I'm sorry.
Delay in payment.
You'll have a lapse in workers' comp coverage.
Is that going to cost us money? Is it going to cost us people? It's going to cost, like, what? What is the, what is the consequence?
So if you have a workers' comp claim and you don't have coverage, you pay for it out of pocket. So if there's a slip and fall, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, we are self-insured, but it is a reinsurance, and so it could cost significant sums depending on what injury there is. I will say, this is a contract that you have approved in the past, four years ago, and it's been annually renewed, but we're trying to stay true to the board's policy on contracts, making sure that any contracts, so as Finance gets these contracts, they're making sure that they come for board approval now. So this is staying true to board policy, and this is why it's coming to you late. Because in the past, they've just automatically signed and approved it.
Ms. Jackson?
But I thought we had a conversation to ensure that this doesn't happen. So when we know that a contractor, something is coming up, so we're not in this situation getting something that's uploaded, first of all, wrong to Board Docs, and then being passed this, what, maybe 20 minutes ago, to look through this, ask to suspend the rules to vote on this tonight because there's going to be a lapse. So when did we know there was a lapse? I mean, you don't count back to see when this needs to come to the board for approval? We've talked about that process, correct?
That would be correct. You would be absolutely correct.
Somebody, Ms. Powers, did you ever line in? No, okay. Okay, I'll coordinate and call the roll.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay. Administration has requested the board to suspend the rules to consider the following item as the training is scheduled for August 4th, 5th, and 6th, which is before the next board meeting, which is not going to be held till August 11th. This is the Key to Ed training, so I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Okay, so no motion to suspend the rules, so.
So you'll just do the presentation.
Okay, Mrs. Cyrus, do you want to make the presentation?
So this is a professional development training for the special ed administrators in my department. K2Ed is the company, and the presentation itself is called Facilitated IEP Meetings. This is a state-approved training that districts across Illinois are getting, they're traveling, incurring travel expenses to go to the training and other sites, and I felt it was more fiscally responsible to bring the trainer, since we have so many special ed administrators to train, that it was more fiscally responsible to bring the trainer here. So it's a four days of training. It's on conflict resolution and management of IEP meetings. It's, the training is scheduled for August 4th, 5th, and 6th, and then there'll be a follow-up day later in the school year.
Okay. Ms. McCulloch?
So I absolutely applaud the attempt to be fiscally conservative in bringing somebody here. When did you guys make that decision to bring the person here, or this group here, this company?
Okay, the reason that this is late coming to you is because the state of Illinois did not get the idea grant to us until the end of May. It was submitted for approval, and this is funded through that grant. It was approved today. So I was waiting to bring it forward until I was sure I had approval from ISBE. The grant was transmitted at the end of June, and there's only one board meeting. So we planned this training around March is when I started to make the plans. This is a trainer, national trainer, and you can't, you have to book early.
Right, which is my point, and, and I'm just wondering, going forward, and this will be my request, I don't know how fellow board members feel, but if there's something like this coming up and it's contingent on you getting a grant, we can vote for it contingent on you getting the grant, can we not? Instead of waiting until the last minute and having, and, and we are going to look at a policy in a little while that the board requested so that we can have a conversation and better understand why there's, people are requesting a suspension of the rules, but there wasn't adequate information in our packets other than here's when it is. And so you guys need to push this through, because, I mean, your argument is very compelling, but I also believe that this administration could find a better way to bring it forward to us earlier to support, and then none of us are in this situation that we look like we're not being supportive and you look, and you're like, what am I going to do now?
Mr. Connor?
To add to what Mrs. McCulloch said, I think what would be helpful, at least for me, if we know, generally speaking, that there are a series of things such as this that are professional development, there's two things that it seems to me, we get criticized a lot about not supporting kids enough, and these are exactly the kinds of programs we understand support kids. But I think to lay these out sort of at a summary level and the timing of them, I think would be very helpful. It would also as.
The timing of the training, sir? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yes, exactly so. So in other words, that I know for myself, when I propose training, I do it sometimes six, 12 months in advance. I say, this is professional development for the following job descriptions. Here's what it's going to be, here's its benefit, and I think that would be really helpful for us, because then at least we could see, and we know things happen at the last minute, state's notorious for this kind of thing, but the transparency, as both Ms. Jackson and Ms. McCulloch have said, I think is important. And so part of this, from my point of view, this is systemic. This has happened repeatedly where we have things that I would think a reasonable person would say, hey, summertime is when this is going to happen, and to hear you say, we planned this in March, I totally believe that. But I believe there's a lot of things like this, and grants are notoriously unreliable. Again, totally understand it, that would then give us alternatives for funding and understanding how these things occur. And I think particularly to paint an overall picture of the kinds of things we're trying to do to meet, better meet individual needs of the kids. So I really, since this has happened so much, I really think that's something for us to ask the administration, if that makes sense, to come up with some kind of schedule, and I know it's difficult because there's so many things to coordinate, but I think some of these things, and maybe special ed is one of them, that's got a lot going on that would help us in terms of looking at that summary view.
I have two general suggestions. One would be that, moving forward on all of these, that we use the board agenda planning meeting, and if the, if the board president and the board member attending the board agenda planning meeting don't want to put something in, then we remove it at that level. We have an opportunity with the superintendent, the attorney, and so I think that's one area that can serve as a clearinghouse for this. And number two, I think the suggestion is well taken, that in the situation like Ms. Cyrus described, is describing today, that we bring things forward on a contingency basis or find some method to notify the board in advance. I think that's an excellent suggestion as well, brought forth by Mrs. McCulloch. So I think we can, I think we will work to address this moving forward. I agree that it is not a good situation to be presenting things and suspending the rules.
Mrs. McCulloch?
I have a question. You said that they have to come back. I don't know if there's, if this contract can be put in pieces instead of having one because we have an under $10,000. So didn't you say that they come back in a future time? And is that part of the $13,000? Because if it is.
Yes, it's four days of training, yes.
So can, can the contract be done in multiple pieces and bring it back to us for the, anything over $10,000 is my suggestion?
Yes, and, and, you know, I, I do understand what you're saying, and I, I just thought I couldn't bring it forward until the grant had been sent to the state, which was June 27th. So I got it here as soon as I could. But we will try that, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so then this will come to the board on our August meeting.
Wait.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules for item Key to Ed, Inc.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. There is no discussion. So we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules for item Key to Ed, which is item B. Have the coordinator call the roll to suspend the rules.
Mrs. Powers? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
So I can ask for a motion to approve the Key to Ed Professional Development Program.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Discussions or questions?
I just think in spirit of, we shouldn't be stringing contracts on purpose. So we should either vote for it or not vote for it, that's why I made the motion.
Okay, any other comments? Coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Key to Ed Professional Development Program.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Absolute.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers? The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Our next agenda item is the professional development for high school math. I'm not sure who's presenting that. Stettman? Is she back there? Oh, there she is. Couldn't see her, back there.
The proposal before you is just for two half-days of professional development for our math teachers in grades nine through 12. They identified the topics, they identified the need for professional development, and this contract ensures that we are able to serve them during boot camp.
Okay. Ms. McCulloch, do you have a question? Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. This will come to our board for a vote on our August 11th board meeting. Next item is the $3,500 grant and gift acceptance. Dr. Wolf?
Good evening, thank you. Mr. Parker, our athletic director, believes that we could improve middle school golf experiences for students by equipping each team at each of our middle schools with team golf bags, and so we look for funding. The Holstrom Fund, which is run through the community foundation, could provide $2,500 to the family members. Each wrote out checks, we already have the checks on hand pending your acceptance to go to that, and Mr. Parker identified $805 available in his FY '16 budget, which would get us through what they need for this coming school year, and we would anticipate finishing off the bag program to get up to 100 bags, seeking grants next year.
Okay, questions or discussion? Ms. McCulloch?
They didn't ask for a matching fund, the $2,500? They just gave $2,500 and then whatever we could? And so how much will we have to get to get to the 100 bags?
I, the total program would total about $7,500, depending on embroidery. The total program would total about $7,500 depending on embroidery. This would get us more than halfway there.
Ms. Powers.
Do we have things to go in the bags?
Yes, we do. They actually do. We have a partnership with Rockford Park District, and between the Park District and Mr. Parker, the equipment is there.
Well, I, I, I understand, you know, the community and that the money is available. I guess I'm really disturbed by the fact that, you know, we're spending our time looking for matching golf bags, when every garage sale you go to, there are golf bags all over the place. And this program is in its infancy. And so, you know, we had the instrument petting zoo, we put the word out very, very actively that if people wanted to donate used, gently-used instruments, I mean, this community of all communities has got gently-used golf equipment all over the place. So I'm not going to say no to the money, but I'll tell you what, you know, looking for 100 matching bags, I think that our time is better served looking to repurpose things and to, you know, send the message of it's not about how you look, it's about how far you drive the ball and what your golf etiquette and all of those other disciplines, not an embroidered bag. So I won't say no to the money, but if this is where we're focusing our energies, I don't think it's well spent.
Ms. Jackson.
So which, all of our middle schools then have competitive golf teams? Is that what I'm understanding?
Depending on the student interest, it is certainly available to all of them, and the goal of Mr. Parker is to get teams available to all students. We could get a report by the next board meeting for you on how many students are actually registered and enrolled in this time. I can't give you that.
So do we, so we don't have golf teams? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying. I don't know how many are at each school. I know that Mr. Parker wants every school to have one. I just can't confirm that we have students who have signed up to play in the coming school year.
But we're going to get the bags?
Yes.
Even though we haven't confirmed? Okay, and then, so I'm talking middle schools. Fit for Life is an alternative. It's one of our middle schools. Will we know if they have a competitive golf team?
The students remain enrolled at their home middle school, and so the program would be for the middle schools.
I'm sorry, repeat that. The students stay enrolled at their home middle school?
So Fit for Life is a program, not a school. So the students have kind of a dual enrollment, but they remain students at their zoned home middle school. And so any participation on any activity would be with them.
Ms. McCullough.
It's my understanding that when we started the golf program, we didn't have, we didn't have a core group at all the schools, and so we did combine schools. We allowed students because they don't even play at their school, they golf at a golf And so I would hope that we would provide the same opportunity, and that will be part of the report coming forward. I mean, if you only had two at one school and two at another, and, you know, at least that's how you get it going. How it fits in, well, this isn't IHSA because it's middle school, so.
Okay. So come for a vote then at our August board meeting. First-
How many bags is this again, that this is covering?
It's 50, isn't it?
This is certainly for 50 and the embroidery and the delivery for it.
Our next is, item is Mr. Schmidt on the Third Amendment to lease agreement with BMO Harris Bank.
Yes, currently, BMO Harris Bank leases out the first and second floor of this building and a small space down for their ATM machine in the basement. That lease ends at the current end of this calendar year. Based on the negotiations with them to extend their lease, they notified us that they would be vacating the second floor, but they still wish to continue to lease the first floor for an additional three years with two potential one-year kickers on top of that. Based on this recommendation, currently they have 39,101 square foot. They're going to go down on this new amendment to the lease to 21,871, which was a reduction of about 14% of the space in the building. Currently, they have 32.24%, now they're going down to 18.03%. Based on this new lease with them for three more years, it will bring in an additional $524,000 in rental payments for the next three years into the district into Fund 24.
Any questions or comments?
When are they surrendering the second floor?
The second floor. They no longer need that space. They're going to relocate the seven to 10 individuals there to somewhere else within the city.
I said when. When are they vacating?
When, based on this approval, and we have to look at the construction, or we have to install some demising walls in there and reconfigure the front and back entrance to block off the second floor, potentially in October or November, for sure by the end of this calendar year.
Okay. This will come for a vote at our next board meeting. You want to move on to the next item, which is the proposed tax abatement, Sell You Swayed Products.
Yes, as Mr. Rollins pointed, at the last operations committee, Sell You Swayed sent in a recommendation requesting a five-year tax abatement for the new facility that they're going to purchase and renovate. Based on some of the recommendations from the operations committee, they have since changed that to ask for a three-year tax abatement on the new facility, only on the improvements that they do for that. That was unanimously approved at the operations committee. They did send in the updated letter for that, and so what you have in front of you is a tax abatement on that property for three years on just the improvements to that building.
Okay. Mr. Connor.
Attorney Hoadley, is the revised document that's sent consistent with statute and our policies?
Yes, the proposal is consistent with it. At the next meeting, you will have the actual resolution to adopt the requested modification or abatement.
That, the reason I'm asking is that actually did come up at operations as a question. The other thing is, there was a question about roughly how much this might be. Mr. Schmidt, do you know roughly the amount that the abatement would equal per year?
No, I do not know what improvements they are going to put into that facility.
Okay, so we don't know exactly the monetary amount of the abatement?
Correct.
Any other questions? Ms. McCullough.
Well, actually, I'm going to make a request, and that is for Mr. Rollins. I did listen to the conversation about this, and it was initially, it was for five years, and what is it they came back to with that are changes that you, and, not what, but why did they come back to you? What was the committee's request to you? If you would just talk a little bit to that for anybody who didn't hear that conversation.
Sure. I mean, this, this company is moving from one facility that's located within the district to another facility within, located within the district, and they're representing to us that as part of that move, they will be making improvements to the facility that they're moving to. They're doing what's referred to as a like-kind exchange. They're exchanging one piece of property for another piece of property. And they had originally asked for a five-year, 100% tax abatement, which they had already gotten from the city and the county, and they came to the school district and asked for the same thing, which would be an abatement of all of the real estate taxes they pay on the new facility. And we, the operations committee had, there wasn't much appetite for considering recommending something like that. The discussion was really about what we really, what we typically see with abatement requests is, well, somebody will come to us and say, I'm going to improve my property. That improvement will result in increased assessment, increased property tax revenue to you, and as an incentive for me to do that, I'd like you to abate the increase in taxes that, that you will see from that improvement for some period of time. And so what was sort of suggested to them is that what we might consider is doing something similar for a period of three years, which, you know, personally, you know, my comment is I view that as a win-win for the district. If they don't improve the property, there's no abatement. If they improve the property, the abatement is only for the increase in the property taxes. It's only for three years, and at the end of that three years, we now have a piece of property on the tax rolls that's worth more than what it is right now. Going back to the policies, we do have, have to have a discussion about this at some point because it came up before, and I think I've learned more about this, this topic than I do the first time, than I did the first time it came up. So there are really two statutes in the Revenue Act that have to do with abatement for commercial properties. One has to do with abatement within enterprise zones, and one just has to do with general abatement for commercial industrial properties. We have a policy on our books that only refers to the section having to do with abatements within enterprise zones. And the conversation I've had with Mrs. Hoadley is, okay, does that policy mean we only consider abatements within enterprise zones, or does the policy only apply to abatements within enterprise zones, and we really have no policy for anything outside of that? This property is not in an enterprise zone. Her opinion is that the policy that's currently on our books does not apply to a request like this, which is outside of an enterprise zone. And so in some way, we're free to do whatever we want. What the operations committee recommended, I think, is consistent with what you see other taxing bodies do on a fairly typical basis with respect to these requests. Even the policy having to do with enterprise zones strikes me, struck me the last time I read it, as being outdated. It refers to job titles within the district that don't exist anymore. We really, this is really something that we ought to take a look at and, and look at updating and revising.
Go ahead.
Yes, and our new CFO is, has been sent that, and we'll be taking a look at it.
Okay. Okay. This will come to our board for a vote then on our-
Mr. Scirvano, may I?
Oh, you had another question? Okay, sorry.
This wasn't a mistake this time.
Okay.
So was there any conversation about how, how it's going to change the tax that we receive on the current property? Because my understanding is they're just going to drop the building that they're currently in on Madison Street, and it's going to become a parking lot. So it's probably going to be worth less money as well, correct? We'll lose money there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. That's the, so when they do the exchange, the people who own the current building, what I did learn is that there's actually two buildings across the street from each other. You know, what I'm, I'm told informally is that the, they are pretty sure to drop one of the buildings and turning it into a parking lot. The other one, they're actually looking at improving. Unfortunately, I think, I'm not positive, but I think that's in a TIF, and so it doesn't really matter what they do.
And I think it's important to note that when they came to ops committee, they came with a request for a five-year abatement, and they had only received three years from the city and three years from the Park District. So when you said that they had gotten five-
That's correct. I misspoke, thanks.
Yes, okay. So they were still trying to get the full five years from us. My question to Attorney Hoadley and your best recollection, have we ever abated on a private property before that hasn't been in a TIF or a zone?
Yes, but as I recall, it was, you've, you've done several, but there was one, I believe in 2010. It was for an entity that was looking to move into the area, so it was contingent upon their move, and they did not move into that, into Rockford.
And, and I would end with the jocular that Mr. Rollins provided when he asked them. They kept saying, well, we're going to combine with this other company in Massachusetts, and we're going to bring 10 new jobs into Rockford, and that's going to be more revenue for the district because they're going to buy houses. And you said, well, can we have a contract contingent on them having to buy land in the Rockford School District? And they're like, sure. Not.
No. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Now, this will come to our vote on the August 11th board meeting. Mr. Schmidt, Bradley and Bradley Architects.
Yes, what we looked in, in front of you is an architectural agreement to hire Bradley and Bradley to do some workforce for fire alarm system maintenance and repairs and upgrades at West Middle School. Along with that, we're looking at having a contract with them up to, not to exceed $50,000 in a year for specialized services like this. Bradley and Bradley is an architectural firm that we have dealt with in the past. They are on our satisfactory relationship architect form that we have out there of a list of all the firms that have done satisfactory work for us. So we're looking to have a three-year contract with them. The first component of this is not to exceed $5,000 for West Middle School fire alarm upgrades.
Any questions on this for Mr. Schmidt? Okay, thank you. And our last agenda item is Attorney Hoadley talking about the revisions to board policy 2.220.
This is a board requested change to policy, changing essentially Robert's Rules of Order, allowing debate on a motion to suspend the rules. And so that's the policy change that's being recommended, and it'll be up for vote unless you want us to suspend the rules to vote on it tonight.
Why not? Okay. That was good.
She's been thinking about that one.
I know, okay.
That was a good one.
Any comments or questions on that? Mrs. Powers? Okay, no? Okay. Okay, this will come for a vote then at our next board meeting on August 11th. Any other further business for this evening? Ms. Powers?
I guess I assumed that during superintendent comments, there would be introduction of the new person at the table. Are we going to meet the new person at the table?
All right, thank you.
I apologize for my breaching etiquette. Mr. Martin McConaughey is our interim chief financial officer, and we're really pleased to have him on our team. He's going to, comes highly regarded and has already started contributing in the short time that he's been here. So we want to welcome Mr. McConaughey.
Thank you. Nice to have you here. Okay. Any other further business? Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask for some clarification or discussion about the process. We've got some good news. Apparently, we're going to get a little more money than what we had budgeted for. What is the process? I assume we have to amend our budget, and will that require an actual no? We don't have to amend our budget to spend more money than what we originally budgeted?
You can, but you don't have to. There, there's always fluctuations in the money that we either get from the state or that they promise, and, and so you can't-
Did you save it?
Okay, well, without a formal process, what will be the informal process?
What our plan is, is to, as you may recall, we did create a tentative plan for what our priorities would be if we did receive better-than-expected revenue in Ms. Talbot Scott's budget presentation. However, based on very extensive board feedback that we've received during the budget process, it's become clear to me that we should revise those projections based on the feedback we've received from the board during the process and present a proposed spending plan. Some early, some early things that we have thought about already would be, as much as possible, because of the risk with those funds being permanent outside of the fiscal year moving forward, as well as the risk that there is really no overarching state budget, and that's the only piece of the state budget that was approved. So essentially, they've approved probably less than 10% of the state budget with that, with that authorization. I think it, it would be very risky for us to spend that money on, on much of anything that has a reoccurring cost. So we are likely to, A, invest in items that will be one-time spends, and B, not actually spend the money till we cash the check, so to speak. I think we will delay spending any of those proposed new revenues as late into the fiscal year as possible until we actually get the money. We saw this year firsthand the state's ability to take an 89% proration, turn it into an 86.5 proration, then move it back up to an 88% proration. So I, while we will absolutely bring the board what our priorities will be for that new money, which could be as much as $6 million in new revenue, we will be very cautious with how we allocate and spend that money until we actually receive it.
Thank you. Any other new business for tonight? Not, I'll entertain a motion to, for adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, and we are adjourned at 8:49.